Okay. Welcome, everyone, to the Dr. Mae Owen Boardroom. Dr. Mae Owen faithfully served this college from 1965 to 1988, from what I was told, and we're going to do a more formal inauguration of this facility in the coming months, but I just want to welcome each and every one of you, and I look forward to that. So, thank you for joining us. Before we call this meeting to order, I do have to read something here. On March 13th, 2020, Governor Greg Abbott issued a declaration of emergency as a result of the COVID-19 virus outbreak. Subsequently, on March 16th, 2020, pursuant to the authority granted in the declaration, Governor Abbott temporarily suspended the application of certain provisions of the Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, in order to permit telephonic open meetings. This was an effort to mitigate the spread of the COVID-19 virus by avoiding large group meetings while still ensuring continued governmental operations and preserving transparency in the decision-making process. Pursuant to this authority, Tarrant County College District gave notice of its intent to conduct today's board meeting work session as a telephonic and video conference open meeting. Trustees Mr. Kenneth Barr, Mr. Leonard Hornsby, Ms. Jeanne DeKine, Ms. Shannon Wood, and myself, Teri Sayala, will be present here in the room, and Dr. Gwendolyn Morrison will participate via video conference or telephonically. So, we'll go ahead and call this work session of the Tarrant County College Board of Trustees for August 12th, 2021, to order. Do we have any public comments or special presentations? Okay, thank you so much. So, we'll go ahead and go on to the next item here of review of the board business items for June 10th, 2021, the work session meeting drafts. Does anyone have any questions or comments on that? Okay, we'll go on to 3B, which is the Board of Trustees' Meetings Notes from June 17th, 2021. Does anyone have any questions or comments on that? Okay, we'll go and turn it over to Dr. Giovanini, please, for the chancellor's overview.
Thank you, Ms. Ayala. You will note that the way the action items, or the items that you are going to discuss today, are presented in a different order, and it's an effort really to be clearer, cleaner, and a little bit more conversant with the items. And we've grouped them, as I had alluded previously in my opening remarks, around the four areas, one of which, advancing academic programs, advancing learning, learning support, college experience, the advancing capital improvements, and then other items. We believe that this might be a better guide, an easier guide, in which to move through these items. And the item description, you will see what the intent will be for whether it be on a consent agenda or on an actual action, individual item agenda. So, you will be able to see that today. We're just presenting it in a little bit cleaner and clearer format around the themes of our work. A couple of things to point out around today's items, specifically, some real advancements in our surgical technology program with the acquisition of laparoscopic equipment, and then a solidifying of our 24/7 tutoring opportunities or services that we offer to students. A number of the other items are certainly very valuable, but I'm not going to touch on every single one of them in terms of a summary. And then, obviously, as you well know, from a larger context, today, we will be looking at several budget resolutions, speaking to appropriating funds for each fund account, if you will, as well as setting tuition and a consideration of salary increase, and also resolutions to consider for next week related to our taxing resolutions, and we will go through those in detail. So, thank you, Ms. Ayala.
Thank you, chancellor. And thanks to everyone for all of your efforts. We know that this is a huge coordination to put all of this together, so we appreciate all the efforts from staff, faculty, and everyone involved in putting all of this information for us, and thank you for being open to some of the comments from the trustees, as well as far as giving us the detail that we have in this information. So, thank you for that. Okay, we'll go on to advancing academic programs. 5A, that's Dr. Shawn Madison. Consideration and approval of the LAPSIM ST Laparoscopic Training System from Surgical Science, Inc., in the amount of $122,500. Dr. Madison, good to see you.
Good to see you as well. Good afternoon, President Ayala, Board of Trustees, Chancellor Giovanini.
I think your mic isn't on. Try that.
Try that again.
Perfect.
Good to see you as well. Good afternoon, President Ayala, Board of Trustees, Chancellor Giovanini. As part of the college's student-ready efforts in leveraging simulation technology to support work-ready TCC graduates, the Division of Health Sciences seeks approval for the purchase of a LAPSIM ST simulator as a teaching tool for use as part of the surgical technology program curriculum. The challenges of teaching sterile techniques, surgical procedures, and how to assist surgeons are significant. Accordingly, the surgical technology program has the responsibility to successfully educate students in any setting for the safety of all future patients. Surgical technologists play an active role in these procedures by holding retractors and driving the camera through which becomes the surgeon's eyes. The LAPSIM is a state-of-the-art mini version of a laparoscopic camera, including instruments needed for organ visualization, and it replicates the surgical experience. As a teaching tool, it is vital to preparing our students for their clinical experiences and the workplace, and will afford students the opportunity to build clinical and technical skills to avoid medical mishaps or errors in the surgery room setting. Just a few of the key features that may be of interest to the board. This technology or equipment may be utilized online, so it's portable and it's flexible. This feature allows students to continue their clinical experiences if hospitals delay nonessential procedures as COVID patients strain hospital capacity, further reducing opportunities for our students to participate in those clinical experiences. The clinical education is accredited, is an accreditation standard, and it's certainly one of the tools that we use to ensure that we are in compliance with the accrediting body for the surgical technology program. Just a bit of information about that.
Thank you, Dr. Madison. Anyone have any questions or comments? Just curious, is a student would be able to use this with just like, what are the, do they use a joystick? They use their mouse? How do they do that? Do you know? Just curious.
Yeah, the external, the online component is virtual reality. So, that piece is somewhat virtual, but in terms of the equipment itself, it's a mini version, and the faculty member will set up scenarios that the students would use. Let's say they need to, I guess we still remove spleens, I don't know. You could, they could set up a scenario that involved the removal of a spleen or an organ, and that will be done and facilitated by the faculty member.
Fantastic. Great. Okay, thank you. Thank you for that. Any other further questions or comments? Thank you, Dr. Madison.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go on to 5B. Dr. LeBlanc, consideration and approval of the renewal with Edmundtem Plato for library courseware and assessments from Edmundtem Holdings, Inc., in the amount of $115,607.50.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Dr. LeBlanc. Good to see you.
Thank you. So, this request is linked to three principles: the integrated instructional learning environments, learning commons, and of course, the scheduling and facilities utilization. Edmundtem, better known as Plato, is a software which can be used in a classroom, lab setting, or online, and it's designed for adult learners, used in adult education and literacy, high school equivalency preparatory courses. And this is a request for a license for one year. It's an excellent product, and actually, we not only use it for the high school equivalency preparation, but actually for other purposes, so.
Thank you, Dr. LeBlanc. Any questions or comments for Dr. LeBlanc? Clarifications? Okay, thank you for that.
Thank you.
All right. Now, we'll go on to advancing learning, learning support and college experience. 5C, Dr. LeBlanc, I guess you're up again. Consideration and approval of contract renewal with Ed Financial Services for Financial Aid Call Center and Verification Processing for Student Financial Aid Services in the amount of $713,110.
Thank you.
Yes.
So, yes, Ed Financial, again, is linked to the principles we call student experience, which deals with onboarding, and integrated student success model, which allows our students to stay in school. It also helps us work toward the goal of being student-ready and working as one college. So, we've had a contract with Ed Financial, which was selected in 2018, and we have the opportunity to extend that contract for one more year, and we are requesting that extension. It will outsource all of the departments, about 100,000 calls for Financial Aid Call Center, and it will also work with the verification files. So, all the files that come in need to be audited and ensured that we are in compliance with the requirements of U.S. Department of Ed.
Questions or comments for Dr. LeBlanc?
I was just curious. We're proposed to exercise an option, if I understand correctly.
Yes, we were, we contracted with them in 2018, and we were allowed to renew through this year, and this would be the last year that we would renew with the same prices.
I'm just curious, how do we evaluate the work they're doing for us?
Yes. So, we do keep account of all of the calls that are made, and we have connected with our research department, so they keep up with all of the calls that are made. And also, the verification is simple, it's paperwork that needs to be reviewed. And so, at this point, our assessment is that they've done an excellent job. They also offer the online calls, which are from 8:00 in the morning until 7:00 p.m., Monday through Thursday, and then on Friday from 9:00 to 5:00. On the weekends that we are open for registration, they are also available. So, it's worked out well for us over the years.
Okay.
If I could add, this is an auditing exercise that every institution has to go through, and many institutions, certainly large ones, or even just middle-sized ones, would outsource this activity. It's a verification process, just really similar to an IRS audit, if you will, that they perform for us as it relates to students' financial aid application.
Mr. Barr, do you have any other questions? Thank you for that clarification. So, to that point about its verification, so I guess, to take it a step further, if they are verifying, is there a timeline? In other words, when the phone call is made, do they have to answer it within a certain amount of time? Do they have to respond within a certain amount of time? And then, my second question would be is, do we, if we identify any trends, that we see that there are areas that our students may be having more of an issue versus others, are we able to proactively look, you know, look at that information and take it for the next year and kind of help them in that sense?
Yes. So, in terms of the phone calls, they answer immediately during the timeframe that we are available to the students. The first couple of years, we only allocated like 50... allocated like 50,000 calls, and we realized that we were exceeding that, which is why we're, we, last year and this year asked for 100,000. So, that's one piece. The other, I'll need to check on the actual data and the trends that we learn from that, and we'll get back to you on that. I'm happy to do that.
Thank you, Dr. LeBlanc. Any other further questions?
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead. Ms. Wood?
Am I on? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. How many students go through this program? Like, how many students do you think are in this financial aid, go through this center?
I will, I will need to get that number, but we, the 100,000 annual calls are about right. We don't have as many students taking advantage of financial aid always as qualify, but I'll need to get that number to you.
Thank you.
I'm happy to do that.
Any further questions, clarifications? Thank you, Dr. LeBlanc.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I guess you're up again.
Yes, ma'am.
So, we're going to do five D. The consideration and approval of a two-year renewal with Tigi Arc for online course catalog and management tools in the amount of $110,000, $110,010 with $55,050 annually.
Thank you.
Yes.
So, this request is directly connected to the scheduling and facilities utilization principle. It's also aligned with our pathways endeavor. Accolog Catalog Management System is used to manage, create, and edit the online catalog, which has actually saved us an inordinate amount of money. But more importantly, we, it's a living document, and so, it's always up-to-date and current, whereas before, when we had only the printed catalog, it was almost obsolete when it was printed. So, we're able to serve our students better through this process. And then, the Curricula is the curriculum management system that we use to revise, delete, and add courses and programs. So, we're trying to work faster in terms of making adjustments to the curriculum so that we stay relevant and current in, in all of the courses and programs that we offer, and this software helps us do that.
Great. Excellent. Thank you. Any questions, comments? Okay, Mr. Kine?
I have a question, too.
Okay. You'll, well, Mr. Kine, and then yours, Dr. Morrison will be right with you. Hold on. Go ahead, Mr. Kine.
Thank you.
Dr. LeBlanc?
Yes, ma'am.
You mentioned that there was a tremendous cost savings doing this exclusively online. For the next meeting, would you mind letting us know what the printed catalog used to cost? Because I think that's a, that's an important thing to be able to communicate to our community when asked.
Yes, I'm happy to do that. And more importantly, or equally important, is the fact that the students are getting the most recent information, and so, they're not having to guess at what's going to happen.
Absolutely.
So, it's really great. But I'm happy to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kine. Dr. Morrison?
Well, I have a two, a comment and then a question.
Sure.
My comment is that at one time, we actually mailed out academic catalogs as a form of advertising. So, I'm not sure you want her to go back that far to determine costs. But the question is, when, how does this impact a student? Like, when I was once in college, I was told to, you know, that you keep the catalog that your program is approved under because it becomes like a contract in terms of your requirements. So, my question is, how does that play out in the life of a student? If the catalog is constantly being updated, are you able to retrieve the, the version that was in play at the time a person's program was approved, or how does that work?
Thank you for that question. So, yes, we keep copious documentation on each student in terms of when they make the decision to take certain program, and we document that. So, that's important. And then, connected to that, we keep copious notes, and we, we never get rid of the catalogs. Those are really important to review as, as we work with the students in looking at completion and graduation. So, yes, we're, we're very mindful of tracking both so that the student doesn't lose on any of the hours.
Thank you.
Thank you for that question.
Yes, thank you. Any other further questions?
Yes, so, does that mean, like, you normally have a degree plan?
Yes, sir.
That gets printed. In this system, when the degree, when anything changes, do they change the number that added did it to that degree plan so then that, that one stays the same? Say, like, if it was 1305, then if, if there's a change that's made the next year or later on, the next semester, if you put 1305C, then that one, it won't change the original?
Right. So, that's all connected. That's all connected.
Some sort of way that they do that?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hornsby. Any other questions? Thank you, Dr. LeBlanc.
Thank you.
We're moving on to five E. Consideration and approval of a three-year renewal agreement with Smart Thinking 24/7 live tutoring service from NCS Pearson, Inc. in the amount of $345,000, which would be $115,000 annually. Dr. Madison?
Thank you again.
Yes.
Via the Learning Commons Principle, the advisory panel, TCC academic support professionals in consultation with IT are working together to connect students with a variety of learning support resources, namely, library resources and also tutorial support as well. One of the key components of the Learning Commons framework is that our academic support areas provide learner-centered services, and we want to make sure that these services are virtual, flexible, and responsive based on learner needs. So, Smart Thinking, also known as Tutor 24/7 for ease of access for our students or what have you, is one of the core academic support services that we provide through the Learning Commons. All tutorial services are listed on one TCC webpage, which is a major accomplishment for us as a team working together through the, the Learning Commons Principle. Students can select a learning modality or academic support delivery mode based on their specific, specific learning needs. So, if they simply want a face-to-face TCC tutor, they have access to that tutor. If they'd like to work with Smart Thinking after hours, they have access to that resource as well. So, anytime, we have tutorial support. All the student has to do is Google Academic Help, Tarrant County College, and they can easily access that webpage. Tutor 24/7 provides students anytime, anywhere, any device, access to academic support or help from experts. The tutorial assistance, excuse me, the tutorial assistance does not replace campus-based tutorial services. Rather, the assistance is supplementary to the services that we provide, and certainly an extension of the resources that the college provides to ensure that students are successful. When students select Tutor 24/7, they can, and they can visit the writing center, and that's a, and submit essays across the curriculum, et cetera, et cetera. They can drop in, they can participate in what's called drop-in tutoring, where you'll see a barrage of times and appointments or what have you, and, and they can visit with a live tutor. And what they use is like a live chat feature that features a whiteboard. So, most of us are usually used to kind of like a little chat box. In this case, they use a whiteboard, similar to the board that you have up here, and a tutor interacts with the student in real time. So, they're typing their questions. They can draw diagrams if they are having questions about math, et cetera. So, it's a very highly interactive resource that students have access to. They can also schedule tutoring at any time, 24/7, and usually at the schedule 24, excuse me, 48 hours in advance. Or, if they like, they can send a question ahead of time offline, and a live, excuse me, a tutor will respond to the student's question within 24, within, within 24 hours. Just FYI, some of our more popular subjects that students use the service for include writing, algebra, and general chemistry. And of course, the online essay review is a popular feature as well. So, that's a little bit about the, the product.
Madison, any questions or clarifications? Okay, thank you very much. Sounds like a great tool.
Oh.
There was something on the screen a while ago. Is that what it's going to look like? Is that they'll be able to access the one that they pulled up?
That particular screen is, is the website.
Okay.
Where, when students need academic help, where it says labs and tutoring.
Yes.
They'll click on there.
Yes.
If you scroll down, you'll see the hours. It's, they just go to one site, and they can choose the discipline. If you continue to scroll, I don't know who's helping me, but they're doing a great job.
[laughing]
You have business, computer science, continue to scroll. And all of those links link to actual live TCC tutors. So, the tutors can, will be onsite in the writing lab, and they can also provide tutorial services at a distance, or students can meet with them face-to-face as well. Come on campus and meet with them face-to-face if they have a preferred tutor. If you scroll all the way down, you will see where Tutor, oh, there it is, Tutor 24/7. And that also, I failed to mention, that Tutor 24/7 is a popular resource for students who are enrolled in TCC Connect as well.
Uh, Dr. Madison, oh, what kind of?
Sorry, what kind of reporting would we be able to, or data would we be able to get from this? Because obviously, it's probably modular, right?
Yes.
They give modules. So, can you talk a little bit about that?
Mm-hmm. So, at the end of, we usually generate quarterly reports. We work very closely with institutional resource, excuse me, institutional research to kind of get a sense of usage. We can also better understand which, you know, which disciplines or subjects that court, that students are actually accessing support for as part of that report. The other piece of that is, we know the times or the frequency of use. What we know, for example, about Tutor 24/7 is that usage increases in the evenings, obviously, and early morning. And then, usage for our services, certainly, you see the increase, the increases throughout the day between eight to five, depending on how we're, we're scheduled. We also work with institutional research to make sure that, that the students who use the resources are successful in their coursework. So, there are quite a bit of frequency, what we call frequency studies. So, you can see that there is a strong association between the number of times you access the resource and, let's say, course completion, or GPA, or, or student success, as we've defined it. So, those are the kinds of things that we review as it relates to the reports that, that are generated in collaboration with institutional research.
Thank you for that. Any other further questions? No. Thank you, Dr. Madison. Okay. Five F. Consideration and approval of a three-year agreement with Gale, a Cengage company for a subscription to Gale Access Program and Literature Criticism online database in the total amount of $298,727.87, an amount, annual amount up to $99,000. Dr. Madison?
Again, as mentioned, in reference to Tutor 24/7 or Smart Thinking, the Learning Commons Principle is tuned in to how we connect students with a variety of learning support resources. Two core components of the Learning Commons Framework or service delivery model is access to resources and research instruction. Accordingly, the Gale Access Program provides TCC student library users with access to a suite of databases, 49, with access to digital resources that cover a wide variety of academic subjects in a variety of courses. These databases represent the most widely utilized resources in the academic market, and they can access these. There it is, right there. Someone's, outstanding. Libraries also use these databases to provide research instruction for students as they reinforce critical thinking, focusing on the effective use of information, how to examine various elements of information, and how to synthesize this information as well. Faculty use the, the program for curriculum support for high-demand courses, and of course, 24 access to supplemental material for teaching, learning, and faculty research, which is an important component of that. So, that's just a little bit about how this particular, these databases or this suite of databases is used within the college.
Thank you, Dr. Madison. Any questions or comments? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Five G. Consideration and approval of the renewal with GoReact, Inc. for the GoReact video assessment tool, the amount of $109,062.80. Dr. Blankenbaker, it's good to see you.
Good afternoon, President Ayala, members of the Board of Trustees, and Chancellor Giannini. This request advances our college's goal of being student-ready and supports the work that the Integrated Instructional Learning Environment Principle wants to achieve. So, GoReact is a video software which makes it possible for students to create and share a recording of their skills performance with their faculty. Students can do this through a secure, college-approved web link as opposed to uploading it through YouTube, which we are discouraging. It is useful in courses such as speech, nursing, American Sign Language, music, languages, and visual and performing arts courses, to name just a few. Faculty can provide real-time feedback to students on the video recording itself. It is readily accessible because it is 100% cloud-based application, which means it is available anytime, anywhere for both students and instructors. It integrates very nicely with our new LMS that we have very recently selected called Canvas. Students can record live directly from a webcam without requiring any uploads, special hardware, software, or camera installations. And it includes a structured feedback rubric for faculty assessment of student skills performance. And this is very helpful, particularly as we integrate more adjunct faculty and we create consistency in how faculty assess student learning outcomes. Students who have used GoReact have shared that this tool is most satisfactory and easy to use. An added advantage is that this cloud-based application provides users with, get this, unlimited video storage and unlimited assessment feedback usage.
Thank you, Dr. Blankenbaker.
Thank you.
Any questions, clarifications for Dr. Blankenbaker? Sounds like a really good tool. Mr. Hornsby, yes?
I have one. I've just, I noticed that it had a 4,000-user limit on that. Does that mean, is that for students and faculty use, or just the student?
That is my understanding, that it's student and faculty usage.
And that, we haven't run up to that limit yet?
Not yet. Our goal is to scale it up, and as more and more faculty become acquainted with the uses of this tool, we hope that this will help us expand usage as well as the contract requirements.
Thank you, Dr. Blankenbaker.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for your question. Thank you so much. Okay. Five H. Consideration and approval of service agreements with Air St. Rose for consulting services related to 3G, 8P program development and planning alignment in the combined amount of $249,383.20. Dr. Giannini?
Thank you, Ms. Ayala. Just for a moment, though, I'd like to mention that this is very fortuitous to be on the agenda at this point. As you just heard, five A through G from Alva Shawn and Zarina really do a, a great job in articulating the strategic work of the college within the principal work. And that's why, in some way, why we've organized the agenda this way. So, you can see a little bit more order as it relates to the connection of the principal work. So, thank you, folks, for doing so. And ironically, five H really speaks to the organization that helps And ironically, 5H really speaks to the organization that helps guide that effort. Right before my beginning here, the college, through an IDIQ process, engaged the company of Air Saint Rose really to help in, in planning efforts around program development and academic strategy, and, and really looking at our programs and industry trends and such, and behaviors of students, and how we would adjust our support programs for those students. And again, as I mentioned before, the college does not have, what many colleges have, a very sophisticated, refined planning office. We have chosen a different route to do that. And I think we've been very successful in large part to our relationship with Air Saint Rose to really ensure, as you've seen already today, the, the principal work. And the, the, the stage of where we are in now related to the work is to take that principal work, many of the good things that you've heard today, and begin to transition that, translate it, transfer it to reality as it relates to people, space, technology, and equipment, specifically as it relates to the bond program. And so, this service agreement focused specifically on ensuring that our strategic priorities are present, are well-represented within the bond program itself. And so, for, for this particular service agreement, really to marry, if you will, to ensure, insurance, if you will, the, the work of the principal work, that it does show up and it is seen in the capital projects. Just yesterday, we did have a session on looking at the, the current status of the southeast design, if you will. And over and over again, what was referenced is to what was in that design, and challenged by some folks, why was it this and why not that? Some of the very folks that you heard from today spoke of the data. And the work that was done in the principal work that really spoke to, you know, science labs, the number of science labs, the data in terms of scheduling to support those number of science labs. And so, what, what I wanna emphasize is that the contract that you have before us is to continue that effort for another year, and this particular service agreement is at a cost of $50,000 less than the last service agreement.
Thank you, Dr. Jovanini. Any questions, comments? Yes, Mr. Bar?
What, what term does this cover, time-wise?
This is, this, it's a one-year. Yeah, it's for one year. Yeah, I'm sorry.
So, this is the only contract we'll have in effect with Air Saint?
Yes. We had had other contracts with them running simultaneously before, but the, and it was really around principal work and capital work, and we've married that into one. Because in fact, it is not separate work any longer. It is very much married, as I indicated, that principal work is now to be seen in the capital project. So, we've married their efforts, if you will, to be more, more concise. It's expected to last a year.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bar. Any other further questions, clarifications? Uh, Dr. Jovanini, can you talk a little bit about how that process works when they're working? Expand a little bit more on how that process works, cause you have an architect firm, and then you have folks that have institutional background, and so, how that works, please?
So, specifically, with the Air Saint Rose and how they fit into all of that. Obviously, they've been with us for a while, and they will continue with us as long as we go down this path of how we're going to address the planning. And they're very much are, are involved in all the principal work and represent that principal work, in this case, to the capital effort. So, they, the Air Saint Rose firm will, along with our folks, will sit with the architects. And, and so, the architect will say, "Well, what is this student experience space, what should it look like? What should these Learning Commons? What should the adjacencies be from the tutoring lab to the Writing Center and so on?" The principal work informs that for the architects. Air Saint Rose plays a lead role in bringing all, you know, that to the table, if you will, and, and ensuring that the answers to those questions are represented properly from the principal work. And then, obviously, those designs turn into construction.
Mm-hmm. So, they act more as a facilitator in that role? Is that, is that, that'd be a good way to describe it?
A facilitator in the principal work to ensure that the right questions are being asked and answered, and that we got good data. There really are the translator that helps the transition of that work to be sure it is present in the drawings. So, I don't know what you wanna call that, but that's, that's, in essence, that's what they do.
Thank you. Any further questions, clarifications? Okay, thank you. Well, now, we'll go on to advancing capital improvements, which is 5I, consideration and approval of contract with Infinity Contractors, Inc., Limited for the Rooftop Air Conditioning Unit Replacement Project at the District Multipurpose Center in the amount of $112,010. Ms. Alanis, hello.
This particular item is less interesting than the others you've been hearing about, but this is the air conditioning units associated with where our Real Estate and Facilities Office is, commonly known as ODMC.
Any questions, clarifications? This is very important, air condition, especially where we are right now, so.
That's right.
Thank you, all right. No questions, so we'll go on to 5J, consideration and approval of agreement for equipment purchase on the southeast campus, chiller expansion project with Texas Air Systems in the amount of $968,000. Ms. Alanis?
Yeah, so this is just the ongoing replacement of our infrastructure to support our buildings. I, I understand that the question was raised about whether we schedule these. We do have a schedule for major replacements like this. It's fairly rudimentary right now. And as we'll talk about in a moment, we are proposing a facility condition assessment and asset management program to be a little bit more deliberate in our, our ability to plan and schedule for the replacements of these major systems over time. But we'll talk about that with another agenda item in a moment.
Thank you. Any questions, clarifications for Ms. Alanis? Okay, we'll go on to 5K, consideration and approval of contract amendment with Weaver and Tidwell LLP to provide construction auditing services for the 2019 bond program for an initial term of two years for a total cost not to exceed $261,525.
So, you may recall at your June meeting, we awarded a new contract for auditing services to Weaver and Tidwell. That's to do primarily our audited financial statements each year. At the time, we mentioned that we were in the process of having conversations with them about the skill set that they have for construction auditing, which includes looking at pay applications with the construction projects that we have underway, ensuring that it's consistent with the contract, ensuring there aren't errors, all of those kinds of things that are important in a construction program of the scale and size that we have. They've provided these similar services to Austin Community College and, and others, and so, they're, they're well-qualified. It's on an hourly basis, and so, we've estimated what time will be necessary for them to not only catch up from the, the pay applications that have occurred in the past, but, but also to get us on, on track with doing that on a recurring basis going forward.
Questions or comments? Ms. Alanis, is there, when you talk about the auditing services, is there some sort of standard that we have to meet from an auditing perspective? And now, is that what they're following, or how, what's driving the?
So, they certainly follow credentials for performing the service, but what I would suggest is that this isn't necessarily a requirement or statute for us to have this added layer of protection, but it is a best practice for us to do this to make sure that all of those bond dollars that we were entrusted with are spent well and, and correctly, and that we catch any errors in, in invoicing and so on as we go along, and don't wait for an audit at the end of a five- or six-year program.
All right, thank you. Yes, Mr. Bar, you have a question?
I was curious on the previous item about the equipment at the southeast campus chiller. This is competitive bid?
Yeah, uh, yes.
Okay. And, and it indicates on the last sheet I have here, Texas Air, H, some company called HTS, apparently bid. It says total point. I'm just curious, I thought we were going to, there's no MWBE participation in this. And I was under the impression we were starting a process to give the board a little more information about things like this.
So, the format we provided is the one that we submitted with the board packet last month, that we felt like answered the questions. That's the, the feedback we, if there's additional?
Well, I, I, I'm typically been, boards I've served in, in similar capacities, we typically have received more information than this. I'll be glad to talk with you offline about it. But when we're spending this kind of money, I think the board needs some assurance about the process that's been used, is all I'm suggesting.
Sure, and, and we are definitely endeavoring to meet that expectation. So, it's, it's the format that we thought was acceptable last month that, that led us visit with you, and, and we'll figure out what we need to provide.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that question, Mr. Bar. I think that Chancellor, is that something that we could spend a little bit more time on relative to that MWBE? Okay. Is that satisfactory to you? Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you for that. Okay, let's go on to 5L. I think we're in 5L, consideration and approval of the amendment to the agreement with Jacobs Project Management Company for Asset Management Support related to the 2019 bond program in an amount not to exceed $240,610.
Yeah, so, you may recall that we actually had this on the agenda in June, and withdrew it before the board meeting to give us the opportunity to visit with President Ayala about some questions that she had. And basically, this is outside of the original scope of managing the bond program for us. One of the things that both Jacobs, as well as our new Executive Director of Real Estate and Facilities, observed as we started organizing the overall program was that we certainly needed much more robust, an update to our facilities condition assessment. That's been probably 10 years since it's been done in a comprehensive way, as well as to implement a program and system whereby we will manage our assets over time, so that we've got a complete list, not only of facilities, but of the component parts of facilities, and so that we've got good schedules about how those systems need to be replaced. The other thing I'll mention is that as we're touching so many buildings, this will help us make good decisions about when rebuild is, is superior to renovation. It will also allow us to align projects to make sure that we're not inconveniencing the occupants by, you know, touching the same building once a year for five years versus thinking comprehensively about how to do those improvements over time. So, this is sort of foundational to a, a mature program that we've got some opportunity to improve. One of the things that they will do first is help us do a, an analysis of what kind of data we need to maintain and how we, how we would want to maintain that. They'll help us select a software product to do that over time that will integrate with our financial systems as well. But it really is about standing, doing the initial assessment, which is really critical, so that we've got the baseline of where we're at, and then, moving forward, how we, how we maintain this very complex program of buildings that we have. One of the things that I thought was interesting to me as we talked to, talked about this is, you know, we've got as many facilities in acreage and buildings as the University of Texas. I mean, we've got a big operation here with what we maintain. And so, you can waste a lot of money not having good order and understanding of those systems and their age and how they're, they're, they interact. And so, this is money well-spent from the standpoint of, of doing good planning.
Yeah, that would be 3.9 million square feet and about 1,500 square miles, or acres, I'm sorry, 1,500 acres, yeah, square market. That's a, that's a lot. You gotta fly from one place to the next. 1,500 acres, 3.9 million square feet.
Any questions or comments for Ms. Alanis? Yes, go ahead.
I'd just like to observe that I've been frustrated about our relationship with the Jacobs team. I feel like the decision to engage Jacobs in the first place, the board, I for one, and I think the rest of the board, didn't realize the commitment we were making. And I, I think this probably needs to be done, don't get me wrong, but $2 million is a lot of money. What, how long's this going to last?
It, it's gonna be over a two-year period. And so, we have planned for the resources in, in the proposed budget, and then we will plan for them in the subsequent year. It's sort of in phases. The very first phase, I believe it's about 750,000 of it, is, is doing the condition assessment itself, where they go out and, and help us build the database.
Well, I just, I would suggest, at least from my perspective, that when we are taking major steps, such as originally engaging this firm, and it's a good firm, don't get me wrong, but I think the board needs to really understand where we are in the process. And this is a lot of, I've forgotten what the total amount of their total contract is.
Yeah, it's noted there. This'll take it to $28 million over a six-year period.
Well, I, I just think that when we're committing that kind of money, the board, you all need to really drive it home to us, the steps we're taking and the ramifications of it. I don't question that this needs to be done. In fact, I just, I, I fully appreciate the number of buildings, the square footage, the locations and everything. It makes a lot of sense to have this. I'm just concerned about project creep and cost creep related to something we've already were, and I don't even question the fact that because of the other work they're doing, it's probably logical that they would be the best people to do this.
That's right. Yeah, one, one thing I will add is, is I'm, I'm very conscious of, of scope creep. One of the, the challenges when you bring in a firm to do program management like this is that they've got a very surface understanding of the state of affairs within your organization as they get started. And so, that is the, the reason that this has come to be as well, is, is as we realized the improvements that needed to be made there. I think their advice was well-founded to recommend that we do this for cost savings over time as we roll out the program. So, you know, so that's sort of how it evolves over time, but I understand your concern.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Bar, and, and thank you for meeting with me to discuss this a little further. I, I shared some of the same concerns with you, particularly around scope creep and how maybe in the future, we could make sure that we're being a little bit more proactive in asking those questions, saying, "Is there anything that we're going to need on the front end in order for us to, to get through this project?" But thank you for explaining that to me and that this is a project management. I know it's, it's necessary, and so, I've already shared my comments with you about this, but thank you for the, for the detail that you shared. Anyone else have any questions or comments? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Alanis. Going to other items, 5M is in, let's see, consideration and approval of a one-year renewal of Illusion Maintenance in the amount of $811,405.
Yeah, so, as you know, Illusion provides our existing ERP system that is the backbone for all of our operations, not only administratively, but also from a student services standpoint and business operations for how we manage their affairs. And so, this is the annual cost of, of having maintenance and licenses for that system.
Any questions or comments for Ms. Alanis? Clarifications? Ms. Alanis, when we get the new ERP system, this will be, continue, this will not, how will this work?
This will eventually go away. There will be a period of overlap with the new system in this one as we roll out the new system in phases. So, there, there will be some overlap, but eventually, this will go away.
Okay, thank you.
It will be replaced with an annual maintenance cost with our new system as well, so.
Okay. Thank you. 5N, unless anyone has any other questions, comments? Consideration and approval of contract renewal with Texas Industrial Security, Inc., TSI, for armed and unarmed security services in the amount of $721,205.
Yeah, so, to supplement at a lower cost our police force for our district, we provide armed security at both our Opportunity Center as well as the Alliance Facility, Seattle. And so, this is the annual renewal of that contract.
Questions or comments? Concerns? Okay, we'll go on to 5O, consideration and approval of the 2021 to 2022 insurance renewal with McGriff, Seibels, and Williams, Inc., RHSB, and Hickbotham in the estimated amount of $24,473,47.57.
Actually, I'm, I may need to go back and correct that amount because we had modified it. So, there may be a change when, your amount is different than my amount. I had 2.3 million, so we'll get that corrected for next week. But the point is that annually, you all see this, that we have a broker, brokers that we've engaged for the different lines of insurance coverage that we have. There is a pretty significant jump this year in two areas. One is property insurance, and as you can imagine, with all of the statewide losses, we get to share in that responsibility. One of the things that we do also is that we en- One of the things that we do also is that we ensure to buy down our deductibles for hail damage and wind damage and those kinds of things. So you'll see that in there as well. The other area that we're seeing some significant increases is in cybersecurity. And again, for obvious reasons, when you see all the ransomware attacks that are out there, we essentially are seeking $15 million worth of coverage that would cover data losses, recovery efforts, ransoms, legal issues, all those things associated with a specific, with any event that occurs within the period of this contract. What's been interesting this year is that they've required a lot of information about the security of our systems as part of their willingness to offer us a policy and assign premiums and so on. And so we've certainly got some areas that we're going to invest some resources in with the security positions that were added in this upcoming budget as well, that our goal is to continue to drive that down by making sure that, not only for the security of the data, but also for the cost of this insurance to make sure that we continue to make improvements in those areas.
Questions or comments? The changes in security, that's physical, that's actual resources? Is that what that is? When you mentioned about security, is that actual physical?
Yes, so one of the improvements that the Chancellor mentioned last week associated with our budget is some staffing and IT for security to enhance our program. We've been using consultant support to build up what we needed to do, and we've got some positions that are included as a result of that.
All right. You know what, there is, I'm seeing there's 2.4 here, and this one is showing $2,358,977.57. Is that what you have?
That is what I have. So we just have a disconnect here that will get resolved before next week.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Okay, we'll go on to 5P. Consideration and approval of the two-year extension and First Amendment to the depository contract with J.P. Morgan Chase Bank, N.A.
So as you're probably aware, J.P. Morgan Chase has been our banking institution for a while. We did a competitive process a number of years ago to bring them back on board. They've got a two-year extension left on their contract, and they have requested an amendment. The current contract actually includes a 75-point floor on our interest that we would earn on any deposits that we have on hand with them. And we generally only have a couple million dollars with them because everything else sweeps out to investment pools. However, they are just simply not offering that at this point, and you can understand that in the market that we're in. It would not be cost-effective or probably productive for us to go out and try to rebid these services and change our systems over in response to that. They are offering a bit of a reprieve from our fees that it normally offsets for the first portion of the year. But to give you a sense of what we're talking about is that we normally pay about $26,000 in fees, and we would get a credit due of about $11,000 a year for that small interest amount that would defray some of our fees. We'll, and there's a table on the second page of this that shows that that first year we'll end up having a net cost of only 14, about just under $15,000 because of those fees that are forgiven, excuse me, $19,000 because of those fees that are forgiven, and then it'll be the full $26,000 for fees associated with their services. We think it's a reasonable request based on the market, and we're satisfied with not suggesting any change other than renewing the agreement.
Any questions or comments, Ms. Allenese? Okay, 5Q. Annual review and approval of TCCD's investment policy and strategy, mineral investment policy, investment advisory agreement with PFM Asset Management, LLC to be assigned to U.S. Bancorp Asset Management up to $235,000 annually and for year 22, investment brokers list.
Yes, so, it's a mouthful.
It's a mouthful, yes.
Yeah, so a couple of things going on here. We, as you know, in June, we provided a copy of the updated investment policy recommendations for the district's assets. You received a presentation on that about how we're going to take better advantage of what's available to us under the Public Funds Investment Act and work to increase the returns on our money. This has become particularly important as we've got bond proceeds and a fund balance, obviously, that's significant to make sure that we're utilizing those effectively. In addition, we are suggesting that we want to engage PFM to be an active manager of what we called our core portfolio. So we'll maintain part of our assets as liquid, then we'll have a core portfolio for investment, and then we've got some bond proceeds that we'll make decisions about in terms of how much to invest and over what timeline based on what our cash flow schedule is when those bond proceeds are made. So this would authorize us to enter into that agreement for a maximum fee based on the maximum amount that might be under contract with them at any given time. The other thing that we, annually, we are required to update our investment policies, and so we're taking this opportunity to go ahead and realign the mineral investment policy approval so it's the same as what was adopted, I believe, in January of this year with all the work that the board did to update that. So there's no changes reflected there, but this gets us back in sync of our annual review and approval of those policies. And then finally, we are required to identify the brokers list that will be used, and that now aligns with the brokers list that PFM has that, because they'll be managing those actively through those brokers, so. A lot going on here, but the other thing I'll mention too is that we presented the investment policy to the committee as a whole, so we didn't take any side steps over to the finance committee or anything like that because we felt like it was important for the entire board to be informed on it.
Go ahead.
Did you address the assignment to U.S. Bancorp?
Oh, no, I did not, thank you. So in the middle of all of these discussions, their, PFM, that branch of their business has been bought by U.S. Bancorp Asset Management. The team stays in place as an entity. We don't have any concerns about that, however, we need authority to assign the agreement once that deal consummates to that new entity, that new legal name for them.
And you're comfortable with U.S. Bancorp?
We are.
Asset Management?
Yes, we are.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barr. Any further questions, clarifications? Okay, we'll go on to 5R. Consideration and approval of job order, contract, trades, pool, and spend parameters for fiscal year 2022.
Yes, so you may recall that this has been sort of a long endeavor over the last probably year and a half as we've revised our procurement policy to cover the way we do things, including our job order contracting, which is intended to have firms that have already gone through a competitive process that are available for us to do things that are unexpected and unplanned and so on in terms of construction. And so I believe a few months ago, you approved the pool of firms that are available for general contracting, and we told you that we would bring the trades agreements back to you, which is what this does. The same parameters that you adopted in the policy updates that we had in terms of what would still come before the board as individual action items would continue. But it allows us to have aggregate spend with those firms up to a higher amount if, you know, if you've got individual jobs under $100,000, it ultimately add up to more. So anyway, this is the ongoing effort to align all of those policies. The other thing I'll mention is that the better we get, and we've been doing a lot of work in this area at planning and scheduling our improvements and our construction projects and so on, the less frequent it is necessary to go to one of these jocks because you're preventing some of that need by doing that planning in advance and having the opportunity to bundle those projects and competitively bid them.
Questions or comments from Ms. Allenese?
I have one.
Yes, Mr. Cullen?
Are you at all anticipating any issues with the depth of the jock pool just with what's going on right now with trades and availability of materials?
So the number of firms that they submitted, they are recommending, was the group of firms that we think is more than adequate to do whatever work we might have available. Now, the market is a little crazy right now, so that may, you know, continue to be an issue. But they wanted the best qualified firms that they think will meet the work. The other thing we want to do is be respectful of the expectation of the amount of work that individual firms might expect out of this as well. And if we spread it too thin, then, you know, it's not worth their time either. So anyway, they intended to be thoughtful about that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cullen. Anyone else have any questions? Clarifications? Okay, we'll go on to, I guess we're 5S. Consideration and approval of expenditure authority through cooperative agreements, state contracts, library purchases, and inter-local agreements for various commodities and services for fiscal year 2022.
Yes, so you may recall, this is something new that we introduced last year. And again, it was in line with our efforts to clarify the procurement policy as well as the board thresholds for spending. Under state statute, we are allowed to use state contracts and other vehicles that have been competitively bid to not have to replicate that work ourselves, use their good work to get a competitive bid and award contracts in that way. And so we have a list of those that we use regularly. The things that you see here are mostly things that are bought as commodities, and I'll use Staples as the example, that, you know, individual orders are $1,000 at a time. But we wanted to make sure we had transparency around the fact that there's aggregate spend over $100,000, and so we bring that to you here. So last year, we started showing this and really establishing what those spend caps are with each of those individual things that are acquired in that way with the state contracts for transparency purposes.
Thank you, Ms. Allenese. Any questions or comments? Okay, 5T. Consideration and approval of First Renewal Amendment for district-wide custodial services with ABM Texas General Services, Inc. for an annual amount up to $5,439,952.52.
Yes, so this is just the annual renewal of our normal custodial services. However, we did include a little bit of a cushion in the event that we get into a situation where we need to have any form of enhanced cleaning and things that we exercised last year. We keep a lot of buildings clean.
Questions or comments from Ms. Allenese? Mr. Barr?
Didn't, I'm sorry, so didn't we have some special costs, COVID-related costs there in addition to this contract?
We did, and if you look at the table at the bottom, it talks about the two amendments that we did over time for COVID cleaning. And those are expiring with this, contemporaneously with this renewal. And so the renewal will cover normal janitorial and gives us a little bit of room in case we need the enhanced cleaning.
Okay. So they end, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. Any further questions, comments? Okay. Consideration and approval of Tarrant County College District's non-credit tuition and fees. Dr. LeBlanc?
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So we are requesting approval of the tuition and fees for the non-credit courses. There are no changes to the tuition and fees for these courses. We are not recommending any changes from last year, so they're the same.
Thank you, Dr. LeBlanc. Any questions?
How many students are in that program, the non-credit?
I will need to get that for you. We do have quite a bit, and it varies from program to program and campus to campus, but we do have a significant number.
Okay, I would love to have that information. Thank you.
Happy to do that. Thank you.
Any further clarifications? It's a lot of effort that goes into putting this together, I'm sure, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go into 5V. Ratification of outside counsel fees for fiscal year 2020, 2021, and consideration and approval of spending authority for fiscal year 2021, 2022, with Fam Harrison, LLC, not to exceed $200,000 for each year, and Winstead, PC, not to exceed $125,000 for each year. Ms. Bracken, good to see you.
Good afternoon, President Ayala, members of the Board of Trustees, Chancellor Giavonini. As you know, the district's in-house attorneys, which is Lauren McDonald and myself, handle the bulk of the legal work for the district. However, we do employ a number of outside counsel to assist with specialized services. Most of the fees associated with those services are modest and do not require approval. However, during this fiscal year, we've required greater than usual assistance from two law firms associated, one associated with employment issues and the other with construction contracting. As a result, both engagements have exceeded the $100,000 aggregate threshold and require some ratification. The board action will also establish, excuse me, appropriate spend authority for those services during the next fiscal year. Fam Harrison is a local firm which specializes in labor and employment law and has been providing legal support to the district related to investigations, litigation, and potential litigation arising from employment issues since at least 2015. During this year, during next year, we required a greater investigative support than usual due to the complexity of certain grievances, potential for litigation, and vacancies in the Human Relations Department. Due to the district's stop-loss insurance, which is with United Educators, fees for representation on individual complaints cannot exceed $75,000, and most are far less. To date, the aggregate fees paid to Fam Harrison are approximately $171,000 for multiple engagements. Past experience indicates that most of these complaints will be resolved administratively and without the need for trials. But in an abundance of caution, staff is requesting approval of the same amount for fiscal year 21, 22. Winstead, PC, was re-engaged by the district to assist in the development of construction contracting documentation associated, released since 2016. Recent assistance has been necessary for support of the bond program due to the size and complexity of associated contracts. In particular, Winstead has assisted in the creation of up-to-date templates for the numerous construction contracts and professional service agreements used with architects, engineers, and other construction vendors. The bulk of the foundational drafting work has been completed. However, ongoing legal support will be required as future contracts are contemplated and finalized. The engagement of attorneys is exempted from the competitive procurement process by Chapter 2254 of the Texas Government Code, and none of the fees associated with individual matters these firms have assisted the district with this year have exceeded the $100,000 threshold. However, because this is the first time, to my knowledge, that the aggregate fees have exceeded that amount, it's appropriate to seek board ratification. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Ms. Bracken. Any questions, clarifications? Okay, Ms. Bracken, even though these are exempted from the competitive procurement process, you know, we've talked about our, we have a desire to make sure that we're engaging vendors that are meeting some MWBE standards. Can you talk a little bit about these?
I can, thank you. With regard to the pool of attorneys that we use, in excess of 35% of our fees are paid to MWBE firms. In particular, Fam Harrison is a 100% minority and woman-owned business. Thompson &amp; Horton, which is the law firm that provides our election support, is also an MWBE firm.
Great, thank you. Any other further questions for Ms. Bracken? Thank you, Ms. Bracken. Okay, we'll go to 5W. Consideration and approval of resolution approving the operating budgets and capital budgets of the TCCD for the fiscal year beginning September 1, 2021. Dr. Giovanini?
Thank you, Ms. Ayala. The key components of this action item deal with appropriating funds for each of the five funds. Fund 10, maintenance and operation of $384,568,757. The Auxiliary Enterprise Fund, Fund 20, of $8,546,000. The Pay-as-you-go Capital Fund, Fund 40, $24,387,401. The Fund 50, which is our debt service, $17,899,544. Capital Improvement Fund, Fund 90, our bond fund, $133,322,141. In addition, these action items also includes the setting of tuition rates, which will not change at $64 for in-district, $126 for out-of-district, $305 for out-of-state, and $305 for non-resident. In addition, as you just approved the non-credit fees for this year, authority to establish the non-credit tuition and fees, and again, to be ratified as you just engaged, as you just considered or approved annually by separate board action. This action item also includes a 4% across-the-board salary increase adjusted, also adjustment- This action item also includes a 4% across-the-board salary increase, adjusted, also adjustments being made to the lowest entry level to pay at minimum $15 per hour. And then, finally, this resolution also asks for the chancellor's authority to set individual salaries and sign employment contracts.
Any questions or comments or clarifications? No questions, all right. We'll go on to 5X, consideration and approval of a resolution setting the proposed rate of .13017 per $100 of assessed values, I'm sorry, assessed valuation for the levy and collection of an annual ad valorem tax and on all property within the boundaries of the TCCD on January 1st, 2020.
Thank you, Ms. Ayala.
You're welcome.
Proposed tax levy resolution does include and designates the tax collector-assessor as officer to calculate the new revenue and voter-approved tax rates, as well as it directs the chancellor to set a public hearing on September 16th and publish notices as required in order to levy the adopted rate, and that will be done at that meeting. I do want to call attention that the no-new revenue rate that we received and the one that we will be living with is 13.31 cents. That, in essence, is different than our adopted, than the rate that we are adopting, that we said we would stick to at 13.017 cents. So, the math will tell you that that is roughly 1/3 of a cent difference, and therefore, the actual amount that we could levy, additional amount we could levy that we are not, is $6.79 million. We are recommending that we stay with our commitment to the voters when we went and asked them to pass the bond resolution to not move, adjust that rate of 13.017 cents. So, in essence, we are not levying the additional amount that we would be authorized to do so.
Thank you, Dr. Giavignini. Any questions?
Can I? Can I? A note that in that document, it indicated that the public hearing would be on September the 19th, which is a Sunday, so, that is not correct, September 16th, and so, we will correct that between now and next week's meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Any further questions, clarifications? Mr. Cunnings? Yes, go ahead.
Chancellor Giavignini, should the rate pass as proposed, could you describe some of the mechanisms that you communicate that to the voters and the community?
Certainly through your action, we'll do so, but every action, or every opportunity that we get. Now that we're in a different time, hopefully, we will be able to engage the community in different types of town council meetings, rotaries, all types of, and each time, I have an opportunity to do that and provide an update on the board and where we stand fiscally, you will be assured that that will be mentioned over and over.
I would like it on a button that I can wear in public.
Well, we committed to 13.017 cents. I guess we could put that on a button, and then, people can ask you what that means, and you can explain it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. It's a great point. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Thank you for your comments. Reported the chancellor.
Thank you, Ms. Ayala. You have a couple of information items, one of which is the addition of a couple of faculty member for the faculty promotion list. In addition, the other information item is the monthly bond program report. Given that we will have a briefing, the quarterly bond report update next, and we'll move right into that, that will capture certainly the monthly report as well. So, John Posh, John Jacobs, please come forward and begin our quarterly bond program update.
Thank you very much, President Ayala, board members, Chancellor Giavignini. Appreciate the opportunity to present our quarterly.
Thank you.
Yes, can we hear you?
Thank you. President Ayala, board members, Chancellor Giavignini, thank you for the opportunity to present our quarterly update on the bonds. So, I will jump right in and give you updates. A lot has been happening since our May update, so, we'll do our usual format here, where we'll give updates on the finances and the project status, talk about MWBE and HUB, and then, looking ahead on, from a project standpoint and from a board action standpoint to the next few months. First, the financial update, so, this is the same slide. We will, it is unchanging slide, so, our bottom-line budget is always $837 million. This just shows it sliced two different ways. So, the left side, of course, is by our bucket or subprograms, the four buckets, and then, on the right side is by campus. So, of course, northwest is the purple, and the blue is district-wide, so, those are the two biggest chunks by campus. The top is our financial summary, and I'd like just to call your attention to the fifth line there of total. So, reading from left to right, of course, you have the $837 million budget. Right now, we have committed $244 million, so, that's right at about 29% under contract of the total bond budget. Spent is $83 million, so, right at 10% of money actually spent. Remaining, we have $592 still to contract. The bottom graph, table is project summary, so, bottom right-hand number is 128 projects. So, this reading from left to right is projects by phase, and you can see total is about 128. Of course, the top two are two big projects. They only count as one project each, but we've got quite a few projects in one phase or the other ongoing. So, to talk about the individual projects, of course, northwest is the biggest one, so, as you recall, we had four GMP packages. So, the first one is basically complete. That's GMP 1. That's the work we've been doing so far on the network operating center, the NOC, as we call it, and that's all the manifold where all the IT comes in and gets distributed throughout the campus. We've got our certificate of occupancy from the city, and our Summit Vault, which is our four-pipe thermal system, is complete. So, utilities under GMP 1 are pretty much wrapped up, which brings us to GMP 2. So, in GMP 2, it's continuing on some site work, some site utilities, and some sidewalks. We're also starting the earthwork for Buildings 1 and 2, so, setting the building pads is the first part of the construction, and we're starting that work for Buildings 1 and 2 under GMP 2. Takes us to GMP 3, which was approved earlier this summer, so, we're getting busy. Our Skanska, our construction manager, is buying out the subcontractors, and we're preparing to mobilize. Coming soon, we'll be mobilizing for the site work and the foundations on those. So, GMP 4 is where I want to take a slight detour and talk about the construction market. So, there are two very large contracts that are coming up after the first, but not till after the 1st of the year. So, that's GMP 4, which is northwest Buildings 3 and 4, and also southeast for the two buildings related to that project. Those are both expected to be over $100 million, and so, will be going to market after the 1st of the year. So, right now, as we finish up the design for those projects, we're actively watching the construction market, and unfortunately, the word in the construction market is volatile. So, costs are going up on commodities, lead times are being extended. Subcontractors in the market are very hesitant to give any kind of guarantees because it's just unsure what's going to be happening. Labor is hard to get, but pretty much, other than that, everything's okay. So, we are, the big question is, when is it all going to somewhat normalize, and that's the question we're really looking at. So, what you have right now on price is your normal construction escalation, which we anticipate, which is on the high side right now, but also, what they're calling the COVID bubble, which has been, which is on top of the normal escalation. So, that is really the big unknown, and it's the big factor right now. So, the industry says right now, that's going to be at least six months till that COVID bubble starts to come down and stabilize. So, we're fortunately in good shape, that we don't have anything huge going to the market until after the 1st of the year. So, our strategy right now, continue looking at the market, continue scrubbing our projects to make sure we don't have any unnecessary costs, continue working on the design with the principal teams to make sure we've got the right buildings, and then, just actively, like I say, watching the markets. On GMP 4 for northwest, we're setting ourselves up with the ability to have some flexibility in when exactly we go to market. So, it'll be sometime between January and April. Right now, the word is, the later you go, the better, because we're trying to get that COVID bubble leveled out as much as possible. So, toward the end of the year and in our next quarterly update, we may have a better idea of what the market's doing, but just to let you know, right now, as everybody knows, it's very unstable, continues to go up, and we're continuing to track it and monitor it. So, GMP 4, like I say, will go in early 2022. So, some pictures of what's happening on northwest. It looks very calm out there. I'm sure Dr. Blankenbecker will, it's not that calm out there, but they are soldiering on as we partner with them to make it as calm as possible. So, as you can see, we finished a lot of the underground utilities. We've got on the left side here, the building pad with a lot of utilities underground, same thing on the utility corridor, so, we're backfilling those things. And you may remember our famous Summit Vault, which is where all the four-pipe AC piping comes in. On the left side, that is now complete, and so, on the right side, you can see that being covered up. So, as of now, actually, it is backfilled and covered up. So, lots of work going on on northwest. Fortunately, it's all underground. We think in November is when we're figuring, October and November, we should be going vertical on that, so, there'll be more interesting things to see on that than there are now. Schedule recap, again, the red line is where we are right now in time in August. So, yellow is the design, and you can see, we're basically done with design. The top three rows are finishing up construction on the work I've just described. The bottom, the fourth row is starting work on Buildings 1 and 2. The blue line is construction, so, that'll be going on for about the next two years. After that, we'll switch over to Buildings 3 and 4, and that'll take us another two and a half years till we're done. Moving to southeast campus, basically, we're moving through design. We've had our workshops with the principal teams to make sure we got all their comments. We've had briefings. We've finished up Perkins and Will's, getting them under contract for the remainder of their work. So, we started pre-construction with our new construction manager, Bern-Peter Hunt Joint Venture. So, they're starting to look at cost and schedule and constructability, and also helping us, of course, monitor what the market is doing. Support services there, I want to just say here, there are three major support services that you'll be seeing through the coming slides and in the coming months here. So, it's commissioning agent, which is basically checking out the equipment and helping us out and making sure all the equipment in the buildings works properly. Testing and balancing, which is related to air conditioning balancing, making sure that's working right. And then, material testing, which is testing concrete when it comes off the truck, steel welds, and things like that. So, there are some quality assurance consultants that are professional services that the district hires directly as third-party. So, we'll be talking more about those as we go along. So, southeast, again, the red line is where we are now, so, you can see, we're still in design. We're finishing up design development and moving into actual construction documents, which is the nuts and bolts of how these buildings are put together. And early '22, we'll be starting the blue line, which is construction on the two buildings. After those are complete, '23 and '24, we're moving into construction on all the renovations. So, still a ways to go, but we're moving through design. MEP infrastructure and 3GAP, these slides are essentially the same, so, I'll talk about both at the same time. There's two parallel paths that we're running on here. One is getting geared up for this, we'll call it the Master Implementation Program, which is a firm that will be coming to you with their contract shortly, and that is to just take a look at our overall projects and what you've heard, the facility condition assessment and the asset management program will feed into this Master Implementation Program, and that will coalesce in the spring, and then, we'll have a much better idea in MEP infrastructure and 3GAP, what the project list is going to be. So, in parallel to that, we're moving forward with projects that are not going to be impacted by that planning effort. MWBE and HUB. So, we're looking, we track our statistics three different ways, so, I'll show you three slides on that. So, first one is to track this in the same way that the college tracks it. This is just bond spending, so, we track construction and professional services. As you can see, the construction numbers are, in terms of dollars, are substantially higher than the professional services. We track both of them. So, for just this third quarter, which is a pretty small slice, we're at 22% on construction, 15% on professional services. As you can see on this slice, that's somewhat short of our ultimate goals. We're still confident we're going to get to our goals at the end, but this is just one small slice for the third quarter. So, we also track inception-to-date spend, and as you can see here, on construction, we've spent almost $9 million MWBE versus almost $32 million overall. So, we're tracking ahead of our final goal on construction, still somewhat behind on professional services, but most of the MWBE services come later, tend to come later in the project, so, construction administration and things like that. So, we will be getting caught up there on our spend. And then, we also track commitments, which we think actually is probably the most relevant metric, because this is sort of projecting to the end, by the time we're spending, we're done spending, where are we going to be versus our final goal? So, in total commitments, we're in good shape on construction, still some catching up to do on professional services. So, that's where we are now on MWBE and HUB. Now, looking ahead to the future here on projects, northwest campus, what we're doing there, two things in parallel, as we move forward on construction with the building pads for Buildings 1 and 2, we're doing a lot of logistics on the campus to get ready for students. So, we're moving wayfinding signage around, we've added some temporary parking, looking at construction fencing and paths in and around campus to help people navigate. So, we are definitely sharing that campus and doing some logistics to help get a smooth start to the school year in August. September, everything keeps moving forward, so, underground utility work, foundation and moving into Building 1 and 2 drilled piers and foundations, Construction Hub, which is a building network, a metal building on the periphery of campus, rather than, if you recall, rather than construction trailers, which we're renting, and then, they'll be gone when we're done. We're building a metal building out there that can be turned over to the campus when we're done, and that'll be going up in September, October timeframe. Southeast, moving forward, looking ahead, design development continues, and here you see some of these third-party services that we're teeing up, going through the procurement, contract negotiation, and ultimately, bringing them to you. September and October, those things pretty much continue as we move from design development phase into construction documents and get ready to issue those drawings after the 1st of the year. MEP infrastructure, still moving forward on our two paths for that and also on the 3GAP. So, August, September, and October, we're looking to kick off this master implementation plan in October. Our plan right now is to bring you the contract next month for the consultant that's going to be working on that program for us. Upcoming board actions for the next August, September, and October. So, we have, of course, this briefing now for August. You can see on the bottom in September, the Smart Buildings Digital Roadmap Master Plan. So, this is one deviation from your book. We decided very recently to move that to September. It still shows up in your book, I believe, in August. So, we're doing some final refinements on that, be bringing you that in, that contract in September. Also, other contracts coming in September, the master planning professional services, and then, just commissioning and material testing for those third parties. October, more contracts for material testing, testing and balancing, and that should be pretty much those third-party contracts. And then, finally, we also, we're getting ready to start a summer 2022 Hilly Classroom project for quite a few classrooms. That's one of our 3GAP projects. So, in October, we anticipate bringing you the design services contract for that project and getting those projects going. With that, I'll say thank you and ask you if you have any questions. With that, I'll say thank you and ask you if you have any questions.
Thank you so much. Any questions or comments?
On the Smart Buildings Design Roadmap project, did I, did I understand we get the results of their work?
Yes, sir. The plan is.
It's not a contract coming, it's the.
Correct.
The product.
It's September, you'll receive a briefing. We originally had it scheduled for August. I reviewed it, wanted some other, some issues answered around accountability in the long run for all of it. So we want to be, make sure it's comprehensive, but it will be a briefing for you in September.
Okay. It's not a contract, it's brief?
No. Correct.
Yeah.
Other questions or comments?
I have a couple of questions, if you don't mind. You referenced something about there's some, an RFQ that's going to be going out for some support of some quality assurance work that's going to be done. I think it was at the southeast campus, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
So my question is, this is, is it, is it set to, are there certain industry standards that they're looking for that they come in and evaluate, or is it standards that we set? Or can you talk, elaborate a little bit about what that, all of, what they're actually reviewing and validating?
Sure. Those are, there are three different things, contracts looking at it three different ways. So the main one is called commissioning. So that is testing all the equipment, and yes, to answer your question directly, there are, there are industry standards for those, and there's code requirements for that, too. So that's what they follow.
It's, it's industry standards, and then there's also some, I guess, standards just based on local construction for standards as well, or?
Yes, so there is the energy code, the state energy code, which has certain requirements for, for performance of equipment, and part of what commissioning does is make sure we're meeting those, those codes and how it actually performs.
Okay. Thank you. The second question I had was about the MWBE. I know you elaborated particularly, I was, I saw around the professional services, which you talked about as well, that that could be increasing. So, you know, obviously, that's something that's very important. We've set a standard that we really want to make sure that, that we're meeting that. So can you tell me about some of the things that you anticipate that we'll see where those numbers will increase? Because you mentioned it would probably be somewhere later in the construction process. So if you could talk a little bit about that, and then also, at what point do we need to really be concerned about that number? Because it's concerning to me right now, but I'm just, you know.
Right. Absolutely. And, and so two, two ways to look at it. On the spending side, well, I guess, on the fundamental, most fundamentally, MWBE is part of our, is one of the criteria we use to evaluate firms. And generally, and typically, the firms that end up getting approved have even higher MWBE goals than, than our goals. And so on the commitment part of it, I do need to drill down a little bit more, because as I see these numbers getting updated, I need to get a little more information myself on, on why we're trailing on the commitment part of it. On the spending part of it, like I said, I do believe that typically, when, when architecture firms, which these two firms are the big contracts we have going right now, they're, a lot of their MWBE is on the construction administration part of it. So it comes, the spend part of it will come later in their, in their contracts. So I'm, I'm going to drill down on both of those, because it's a very good question, and it's a question I have, too, that I want to make sure I'm, I'm comfortable with. One thing I believe may be impacting that is that there's the commitment that the firms go in with, but then there's actually signing up their contracts. And I think there may be a lag between their signing up, their, a lot of their subcontractors that are MWB, and that may not be hitting the record yet. So it's a good question. We'll, we'll follow up with, with some more information on that.
Thank you very much. Any other questions, comments? Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Okay. Let's see. Anything else, Mr. Dr. Jivannini? Okay. Are we having a closed session, Ms. Bracken, at all? No? Okay. No other further questions or comments, and we're not having a closed session. I'll entertain, I think.
Administrative suites.
The suites, yes. Thank you, Mr. Gates. I don't know what we'd do without you. The, if anyone is interested in taking a tour of the administrative suites, those can be conducted after the meeting today. Just, I guess we could convene in the back there, and Mr. Reginald Gates will coordinate that. So if there's no further questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion adjourned.
No.
So moved, Mr. Hornsby.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Barr. Okay. Thank you all for attendance today, and we will meet back here next Thursday again. Have a good afternoon, everyone. Thank you, Dr. Morrison.